The committee is now returning to open session at 7:01 PM. Good evening and Happy New Year. I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, January 5th, 2022. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco channels 22, 29, and 329, and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Thank you to SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah and Liz Poploski for their assistance with this broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, January 19th. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Tonight, no one has expressed interest in participating. However, for future meetings, if anyone wishes to participate in public participation, they should contact the chairperson prior to the beginning of the meeting. The next item on our agenda is chairperson's and members' reports, colleagues, anything to report this week?
No.
Okay, great. And now, the next item on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. Just want to, we'll be making a report in a little bit about our situation with the pandemic, but I did want to make sure that we thanked a variety of people who worked at the end of their vacation time to help us make sure we could have a smooth opening to school on Monday. We, many people saw in the news that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education made both the supply of masks available, but also a supply of rapid tests. We weren't made aware of this until a few days before New Year's Eve, and we needed to mobilize in order to pick those up and distribute them to staff who were willing to come stop by and pick them up so that they could test on Sunday prior to resuming school on Monday. Good news is, of the 700-plus staff who tested on Sunday, only 2% were positive. Of course, it was good to have that 2% not in the building, unaware that they were infected with COVID, but we also were able to manage our staffing a little bit more specifically as a result of having that information going into Monday, which was helpful. I'd like to specifically thank a few folks. Matt Sena, who's our district courier, who's helped us with a variety of pieces, including picking up the masks from a location in Worcester where they had been delivered. I'd like to thank Katie Fox, who is one of our human resources assistants, who has been working extremely hard to procure and get on, the onboarding process done for new substitute teachers, including a variety of college students who are home on break, who are helping us over this period of time in early, late December, early January. And also want to thank the folks who came in and actually did the work to distribute the masks and the tests over the weekend. Anne Marie and Katie Monopoly, who are both paraprofessionals with us. Substitutes Caroline Conti, Joan Laramie, Liam O'Toole, Elizabeth Bonham, and Kaylee McNamara. April Yu, who's our Assistant Director of Finance and Operations, did a ton of work to make sure that that process went smoothly. And Patrick Collins, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, made the trip in the school district van to pick up all the rapid tests on Saturday morning, New Year's Day, to get them back here to the district so we can start distributing. I also want to thank our substitute callers. They're certainly unsung heroes, particularly over the last couple of years. They're on a day-to-day basis trying to do everything they can to procure substitutes, which are, you know, we have a shortage of, as every other school district does. But at the elementary level, Anne Marie Monopoly. At Sherwood, Jody Kuchar. At Oak, Deb Troyo. And at the high school, PJ O'Connell. Also want to thank Kristen Herrick, who's our Director of Specialized Programs and our Special Education Administrator, who does incredible work each day to try to organize and make sure that our special education assistance across the district where we have absences, that we have to shift and move people around to make sure our students who need that support have someone attending to their needs. It's a big team effort, and I just really appreciate people's willingness to give up time at the end of their vacation to help make the ability for us to open school easier and better on this past Monday. So thank you to those folks, and we'll be speaking more to all the other issues relative to COVID and the pandemic in the report coming up, and that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Great. Next item on our agenda is a timed scheduled appointment regarding Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association's successor contract ratification and committee vote. Some background for the public. Negotiations between the school committee, represented by myself and our Vice Chair Sandy Fritz, along with the Central Office Administration, the district's legal counsel, and the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, SPA Unit D negotiating team concluded on December 21st with a tentative agreement between the parties. A memo from Ms. Malone, a copy of the memorandum of understanding was included in our packet tonight. And per state law, our town manager, Mr. Kevin Mizikar, is entitled to vote regarding the collective bargaining agreement, but is not able to participate in tonight's, tonight's vote. So happy to have with us tonight our Executive Director of HR, Ms. Barb Malone, to give us just a high-level overview of the details of the agreement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wensky. We were able to settle a three-year contract with the Shrewsbury Paraprofessionals Association. The total cost in FY '22 is about $7.5 million. The exact number is in your, in your packet. That includes step progression as well, as well as some dropping of steps and adding of steps to keep us current with market, the addition of a paid holiday in the third year of the contract, and when paraprofessionals serve as a substitute teacher, increasing by $1 an hour to their base hourly date. So currently, it's $4 an hour, and it will be $5 an hour in year two of the contract when they substitute as a teacher. And, you know, obviously, I'm recommending approval of the new contract to the Shrewsbury School Committee, and I would like to thank both the Paraprofessional Association and you, Mr. Wensky, and Ms. Fritz for your support through the process, and of course, Dr. Sawyer and the other members of the team.
Mr. Wensky, if you don't mind, if Ms. Malone, just for those viewing at home, maybe you could talk about the cost of living increases that are in each year of the contract. That would be, I think, helpful for those who are viewing.
Sure. So for the child-specific special education and instructional assistance, which you might have heard referred to as AIDS in the past, it's 2.25% for year one, 2.25% for year two, and 2.75% for year three. And for the ABA technicians, it's 102.25, 102.25, and 102.5. And then for the speech assistance and CODAS, that's 102.25, 102.25, and 102.5. And for media aides, media aides or media assistants and tutors, it would be 102.25, 102.25, and 102.5.
Great. Thank you very much. This is a good news story to start the year. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Ms. Fritz?
I just want to thank all of the SPA members who worked on the team, and we have some of them here tonight, so thank you for coming. Our goal from day one was always to make sure that we had money in the pockets of these employees. They are an integral part of what we do as a school district, and we can't do this job without them. And we need to attract and retain good staff, and that has been our concern from day one, looking at where people are in the labor market. And I think as we move through the process, and I think particularly the last few meetings, I'm going to point you out, Robyn, because you said it during the meeting, like the communication piece during the, the last few meetings, I think, was vital to everything that we did together as teams and working on it. And it helped us understand things, it helped clarify, so I, I'm really glad that we were able to meet and really have those discussions in that room. So thank you very much for participating. We appreciate everything that you do, and you are, again, a very, very integral part of what we do, so I'm very happy that we were able to reach an agreement, and thank you for all the time you put into this after work. It's very much appreciated.
Any other comments or questions? Yeah, I'd like to, first off, you know, thank members of the SPA negotiating team who are with us tonight, and those that aren't, really appreciate your partnership in, in the hour spent and reaching a successful negotiation. Also, just really appreciate everything that you do for our district, a very integral part, as Ms. Fritz said, and a critical part of our success, so thank you so much. I'd also like to thank the Central Office Team for their outstanding support during these meetings, certainly Ms. Malone, Mr. Patrick Collins for the financial analysis and, and the updates, Meg Belcito, our Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, certainly Dr. Sawyer as well, and my colleague, Ms. Fritz, for expertise with negotiations. You know, really, really happy with the way things landed here, and I really appreciate everybody's partnership and the time that everybody put into this, so thank you very much. Also, I'll mention our legal counsel as well. Sarah Spatafor was critical in the success of this agreement, so thank you to all that were involved in this. Now, presuming that, you know, we have a positive vote, certainly I do have a joint statement that the SPA and school committee have agreed to once the vote has been confirmed, but prior to doing that, I just want to go to Dr. Sawyer, a recommendation from your perspective.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Wensky. I also would like to certainly underscore all the thanks to the you and Ms. Fritz, and to the members of the Central Office Team who assisted with negotiations. Very grateful for all the paraprofessionals who served on the negotiating team, giving their time to represent their colleagues and their colleagues' interests, which is important, and particularly with President Noreen Christie and Vice President David Lowey, with whom we've worked carefully and closely over the past many years. I've had the benefit of having worked with some of these folks, including Mr. Lowey, for almost going on 25 years now, and we have a lot of paraprofessionals who have served the district well for a very long time, and I appreciate that we've achieved a win-win situation here in terms of this contract. There are, as Mr. Wensky mentioned, these are critically important roles to our school district. Our students benefit a tremendous amount, our other staff benefit from their support. We could not have the quality of education we have in Shrewsbury without our paraprofessionals, and we're greatly indebted to the work that they do each and every day to support our schools. And based on, I think, what is definitely a fair and reasonable and thoughtful agreement that the two parties have come to, I do recommend that the school committee vote to ratify this evening.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. With that, colleagues, I need a motion that, I just lost my place, sorry. A motion that the committee vote to ratify the three-year successor contract with the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, Unit D, as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion carries unanimously. And with that, I would like to read our joint statement between the Shrewsbury School Committee and the Shrewsbury Paraprofessionals Association, Unit D. And I'd like to invite Ms. Christie up to the table here. So if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and read that from here. So for, I would like to take this opportunity to read the short statement with the school committee and SPA. "The school committee and the association are pleased to announce the successful negotiation of a successor collective bargaining agreement for the period of August 27, 2021 through August 26, 2024. The parties negotiated for several months to reach this agreement, and both parties agree that it represents a positive step forward for the district and our paraprofessional staff who work hard in the, in the schools every day, supporting students and other staff members. This new contract contains a substantial increase in wages that will better compensate our existing paraprofessional staff, bring Shrewsbury more in line with the market for these positions, and attract more qualified candidates to our district. We are grateful for the work of the parties in reaching the contract, reaching this contract, and look forward to a continued collaborative relationship." With that, Ms. Christie, any?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of the school committee members. We had a, we had a, I don't want to say a fun time, but we had a long time getting to know each other, and I just want you to know too that in the course of talking to my members, all 200-plus of them, getting to know them and their wants and their needs, I just want you to know, and I know you already know it, that you have a fantastic group of paraprofessionals that work for you, and we're very, very pleased that everything came down to the Happy New Year that we were looking for, so I guess we're pleased too. So thank you so much for all your, all your, your good, the good times and, and some of the not-so-good times, as we all know, but it was worth the struggle, and we thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much. Noreen, and thank you to your members here tonight. I appreciate your dedication and commitment to Shrewsbury Public Schools, and look forward to success in the coming years, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right, on to the next item on our agenda, another timed scheduled appointment, more good news. It's a gift to the Colonial Fund by an anonymous donor, requires a vote. Per school committee policy, 9/11, gifts of $5,000 or more must be formally accepted by the school committee. Dr. Sawyer will acknowledge a gift to the Colonial Fund of $20,000 from a donor who would like to remain anonymous. With that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. I mean, there's not much more to say. We're deeply appreciative of the fact that we have such a generous member of the community willing to invest in our students, in our staff, in this way. I will take the opportunity to thank our co-coordinators of development and volunteer services, Kathleen Cohen and Michelle Biscotti, who created a lot of year-end communications to send out to the donor list for the Colonial Fund, and highlighting, and we'll make sure we promote this in some other ways as we get into the new school year, a variety of projects that are being undertaken with the funds that have been raised over the past year-plus. And this new gift will help us to continue that work, to provide innovative opportunities that may not be covered initially in a budget, as sort of seed money to continue working towards finding ways to support our students. And of course, right now, given everything that's going on, the more opportunities we have to find ways to support our students and help our staff move things forward, the better. So enormously grateful again for the generosity of our community and for this anonymous donor in particular, and I certainly recommend that the school committee vote to accept.
Great.
I just want to second, Dr. Sawyer, the, the team's work and communication has been duly noted by me in the letters that I get, in the social media posts, in the, in the email distributions, and it's really quite impressive and, and clearly paying dividends. And so while we can't specifically thank whoever this anonymous person is, I think, I hope they all know how appreciative we are, and the, the opportunities this allows for us are certainly excellent, but, but a huge thank goes to that, to that team for, I do think, continuing to remind people of the different ways they can help contribute to the success of the community, so thank you to them.
Any further comments or questions? Okay. There being none, I'd like to have a motion that the committee vote to accept a gift to the Colonial Fund of $20,000 from an anonymous donor.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is also a timed scheduled appointment. It's a report on the district's response to the pandemic. Dr. Sawyer will provide the update.
Okay. And just bringing up my screen here. All right, and Ms. Freeman will assist me a little bit later in the presentation. Noel Freeman, our Director of School Nursing, who does tremendous work and has been enormously valuable during the course of this pandemic, which is getting close to being two years anniversary, but hopefully not much longer beyond that. I mentioned when we started the meeting and thanked a bunch of people that we did, you know, have a smooth opening to the return from the vacation. We did have some tools to help us look at things in terms of tests, rapid tests for staff ahead of time, and we were certainly holding our breath because, you know, staffing is one of the things that is of concern, and, you know, people have seen in the news that we have had some school districts across the state that have had to close a school or, or the entire district because of a staffing shortage due to the number of staff who are out with, you know, COVID particularly, but also other things as well this time of year. But, you know, so far, so good. We've had three days of school since the December vacation, and that said, it has been challenging, and it's required a lot of flexibility on the part of our staff, and I greatly appreciate that. I will start off again, just reiterating that our primary goal this year, and it hasn't changed, is to provide full-time in-school learning for students with minimal disruptions, while also using mitigation strategies to minimize the risk of contracting COVID-19. And we know that with the Omicron variant, transmissibility has gone way up. We're seeing that, of course, across the board, across the nation, and certainly here in Massachusetts and in Shrewsbury, and so those mitigation strategies are important, and we are going to be continuing to focus on them, given the situation. Our approach is to implement those strategies that reduce risk, also because of the importance of students' mental health needs, create a sense of belonging, support their social and emotional and mental health needs, and to provide learning opportunities for students that support their academic needs. This is a number we have not seen before. This is Massachusetts rate of positivity relative to the rest of the country, not as good as it typically is, still in the lower fifth, I guess, but it's up to 20.27%, which you can see that green line at the bottom, which is the 5% benchmark that was established by the World Health Organization, to consider putting into different kinds of mitigation strategies. It's certainly well above that, and you can see how that the variant, the Omicron variant is affecting the nation that way. In terms of cases by age, you can see that we're, you know, higher numbers certainly than what we were seeing prior to the, the break. This is of January 3rd, and you can see that for students up to age nine, 9,500 cases in the state over a two-week period, and for ages 10 to 19, almost, well, 11,600 cases. Hospital admissions continue to be very low, especially for younger people. 5.4 per 100,000 people for age up to age 11, 2.6 per 100,000 for ages 12 to 17, and 5.5 per 100,000 for ages 18 and 19. We know that, you know, it's something that is disproportionately affects those who are older. In terms of hospital admissions, we also know, it's been well documented, that hospital admission has been disproportionately those who are not vaccinated, who are, or who otherwise are immunocompromised. In terms of locally, looking at the total cases in the town of Shrewsbury over the last few weeks, you can see those numbers moving up rapidly from 161 to 210 to 361. This week, we don't know what it'll be. It'll be a much bigger number, we're sure. You can see in terms of our students, moving from 48 to 36, and then an uptick over the vacation week, and then it's really just absolutely moved higher than we've ever seen before in one, a one-week period. This is since Saturday, we've recorded 228 cases among Shrewsbury Public Schools students. So last week, with 79 students, that's a little over 1.3% of our student population. That's moved so far this week to 3.88%. Obviously, in the context of the entire student body, still a relatively small percentage, but much larger than we've seen prior. In terms of the 14-day positive test rate for Shrewsbury itself, lower than the state as a whole, 7.30. I'm sure that number's going to climb up as we, they start to catch up with some of the numbers. This is through December 25th. In terms of our case count, as I mentioned, this, including staff, this week alone, this Saturday through today at 2:30 PM, we cut this off, and we've had 275 cases. Now, only 53 of those are students in the school, or people in school during their infectious period, because some of those cases happened over the weekend, or they haven't been in school because they had symptoms and didn't come in. In terms of the, only one case out of this traced to in the school, but, you know, we have to understand that from December 24th, January 2nd, you know, we didn't trace any. And then this week, there's been sort of minimal contact tracing and, or the ability to complete it at this point, and Ms. Freeman will speak to that in a bit. Cumulatively, you can see that we've had now 766 cases, so that's more than doubled since we last met with you on December 15th. 343 of them were in school, 60 at this point, and that number, you know, will certainly go up from there, but of course, the, at this point, the vast majority of all these cases happened over the, over the vacation, in terms of their exposure. As far as breakthrough cases, you can see that as far as students, if you combine those who are unvaccinated and not eligible, you're talking about 62% of the student cases were not vaccinated fully. Small percentage we weren't sure about. For staff cases, you can see that the vast majority of cases were vaccinated, but that's also because we have over 95% of our staff who are vaccinated. Our older students are, have higher numbers, and we'll report on that in this report with some vaccination rates. I've had a request to do that, but that's what our breakthrough cases look like at this point. Our dashboard that we publish each Monday, for those who do have checked it out, we actually updated it today because we had a certain number of cases we were aware of, and then on Monday, after we finalized the numbers to publish, Ms. Freeman started becoming aware of a large number of additional cases that families were calling in, where they had, their child had tested with a rapid test at home over the break, and they were reporting out those cases to us. Up until this report, we've essentially only reported cases that are documented through PCR tests, which go into the public health system, which we have access to, Ms. Freeman has access to that through Worcester Public Health, and we would, we would want a PCR test confirmation if someone reported a rapid test. Public health has shifted their guidance on that, and they're essentially, because of the availability of tests, lack being lacking, of course, and the demand being so high, if there is a rapid test positive, we are to consider that a case, and we don't need to have a follow-up for PCR to count that among our cases. So we did update the dashboard, and you can see that as of last week, we had 104 cases for the week ending Friday, December 31st. This is the visual of what you can see for cases by day with the big spikes coming here at the end of December. In terms of by week, again, you see the week ending 12/31, and that number's going to go substantially higher. That graph will, will move, you know, twice that, more than twice that with this current week, just given the number of cases we're experiencing. Again, as of the end of December 31st, this is our by school. We did have some additional cases that we saw at the high school in particular. You can see the distribution across the schools there. And this is the distribution by grade level. The total number of cases broken down by students and staff as of the end of the day last Friday. And here's some vaccination information we have not presented to you before. The state does publish this each week, so this is as of December 28th. Students who were age five to 11 became eligible, I want to say about six weeks ago now, to start getting vaccinations for the two-shot protocol with Pfizer. We've had 58% of our five to 11-year-old students in Shrewsbury. Excuse me, this could be any student who lives in Shrewsbury, not exclusive to the public school district, but vast majority of students are in the public schools, of course. But 58% of five to 11-year-olds have one dose, and 40% are fully vaccinated. For 12 to 15 years old, over 95% have received at least one dose, and 88% have had both doses that are considered fully vaccinated. And for 16 to 19-year-olds, those numbers are greater than 95% for one dose and 91% for fully vaccinated. We also have 19% who have received a booster shot in that 16 to 19 category. We'll start to see statistics for the 12 to 15-year-olds, that's imminently going to be approved, and we'll start seeing those, that age level being eligible. Certainly, you know, families should continue, continue to consult with their pediatrician or family physician. It's, it's clear that the medical experts are recommending those boosters, and that's something that families certainly should consider for their teenage students. This is data that we have access to through the state system in terms of the students who are in our schools, and so these next two slides do show just the number of students by grade level and the percentage who have at least one dose, or, and you can see the total doses there as well. So that's our elementary level, which have been eligible in recent weeks. And then these are the remaining grades. The upper grades have a higher percentage, of course. And Ms. Freeman, maybe at this time, could you just mention the fact that we are looking to set up another clinic, which, maybe talk a little bit about the clinics we had in December?
Sure. Yep. So we, as you are aware, we had clinics at the beginning and, beginning of December, and then three weeks later for a second-dose clinic for five to 11-year-olds, but we were able to offer booster doses for anyone who was eligible, or first doses if people needed those. The clinics were quite successful. We vaccinated over 300 people each night, so each, in a three-day, nine-hour span, we vaccinated over 1,000 people each go around, so those were some of the biggest clinics that the Public Health Alliance, the Central Mass Regional Public Health Alliance the Central Mass Regional Public Health Alliance have hosted. And I really do need to thank the public health nurses from the Alliance, Pat Bruckman and Amelia Houghton, who ran the clinics, and as well as the volunteers who came to vaccinate. It's actually difficult to find people who are willing to vaccinate little children. So we were fortunate to partner with, there's a group of medical students from UMass Medical School who are willing, have been trained, and are willing to do that work. So each night, we had about 12 vaccinators, and were able to move, again, over 300 people through the site pretty efficiently. So we are looking to schedule another clinic. Hopefully, next week, we're trying to round up those volunteers because it does take so many people. And we're, so we're thinking of doing one clinic, hopefully, next week, to get second doses for the 5 to 11-year-olds who receive their first dose at our second round of clinics. It kind of creates an ongoing cycle. And by then, if the vaccine, the booster is approved for five, for 12 to 15-year-olds, those students would be able to attend as well. And again, hopefully, we can open it up to anybody who's looking to get vaccinated. So it's worked out well for the community. And again, my thanks to everyone, my nurses were all, some of my nurses were also there drawing up the vaccine, so it really does take a big team of people. But it's a great thing to be able to do.
Hopefully, we'll see some of these percentages for booster shots move up if people take advantage of that. And obviously, there's other places, and we'll continue to communicate accessibility for those.
Right, and I would also just note that our numbers maybe are on the lower side because it is information, we haven't required or requested that families send us information on vaccination for their students. So those percentages are based on what our electronic health record can pull from the state system. So we don't have access to everyone's record. Not everyone has a record in the system. So those are kind of the minimal numbers of kids who are vaccinated. They are probably, in reality, even higher than that.
This is some data that we pulled together, and I want to thank Blake Stewart, Assistant in the Central Office, for putting these together for us. You can see what the percentages are compared to some local communities surrounding Shrewsbury for each of those age groups in terms of dosages. And I was curious to see, you know, especially those 5 to 11-year-olds who became eligible more recently, where there are some communities nearby that have higher percentages at this point. Hopefully, those will start to catch up as the numbers that we did through those clinics get into the system, and as people move forward with that. You can see in terms of boosters, a couple of the communities are further ahead there with 16 to 19-year-olds. You know, we know, again, from what the experts are telling us and what the data are showing, is that those who do have vaccinations are better protected against negative outcomes when it comes to, when they contract COVID. I'm going to ask Ms. Freeman to speak to the next few slides around our Test and Stay program, just an update on the statistics, and then moving into some conversation about what's happening with contact tracing right now.
Thanks. So as you can see, over, actually, that number is higher than that. Over 1,400, we're probably closer to 1,700 individuals have participated in the program. Almost 5,000 tests have been administered. We've had 32 positive test results, which is a 0.65% positivity rate. And we're nearing 5,000 student learning days that have been preserved through the program. The only thing I want to remind people about Test and Stay is that it is still only for, available for people who are determined to be eligible to stop by and get tested there. We have had some families recently kind of drive-through and request a test because they're having a hard time getting one somewhere else, which is totally understandable. Tests are hard to get at this point. Unfortunately, the state program does not allow us to do that at this point. So we need to stay within the guidelines, and only those who receive a notification from their school nurse that they're eligible to participate can get tested there. So the pool testing program that has been in place since the fall, about 25% of students and staff are participating. We're always encouraging people to, more people, to register for the program. It's open to register at any time if people would like to kind of join up. We have processed, or the lab has processed, over 21,000 samples. And to date, we've had 51 positive test results. So about a 0.24% positivity rate. We do not have this week's test results back. I'm very interested to see with the increased number of cases across the board, how many we might have this week. But we usually have those results by Thursday evening, so. And just an update on contact tracing. I'd like you and the community to just be aware that it really is becoming unmanageable for school nurses at this point, despite all of your support, the district's support in adding staff. We have hired two dedicated contact tracers, both with public health experience, and they have been a great addition to our team. However, with the number of cases that we have had since we've come back from break, it just is not something that we can sustain. For example, today, 57 cases were reported as of 4:00 PM. I think there's six or eight more that I've heard about since. And 37 of those cases required contact tracing today. So clearly, that is not something that the nurses can do while also being school nurses. In some cases, we have kind of closed the nurses' office to emergencies only so that nurses can do the work that they need to do. But clearly, that's not ideal, that we be shutting down nurses' offices in order to do this work. So we are looking at ways to still identify close contacts as much as we can, but at the same time, kind of scale back the level of detail that we've contact traced to date. Because, again, it just isn't possible. And it, the kind of weighing the benefits of nurses doing their other work, it feels like we just need to, to scale back on this a little bit. So when there's too many cases to do the detailed contact tracing, we are continuing to look at cases and kind of focus on the higher-risk areas, such as lunch contacts. So people are still being notified if their child is a contact and would require test and stay. But, again, just not to the same detail that we've been able to do in the past. I have talked to public health about this. And Pat Bruckman, the public health nurse that we've consulted with throughout, is in agreement that it's just not sustainable, much like it isn't sustainable in the community anymore to do the level of contact tracing that they have done. So we are in discussions about kind of how this will evolve and what changes might be made officially by public health and also by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's come up in meetings recently that this is, this is not unique to Shrewsbury. This is, school nurses everywhere are just saying, this is not something that we can continue to do. So we will certainly keep you and the community updated as the process changes going forward. But I did feel like it was something important for you to be aware of.
Some information this week, just given the spiking cases. Pam Panarelli, our registrar, ran the statistics for us each of the last three days since we came back from vacation. It's attracting out, there's a number of families that sometimes go away, don't come back over the first few days after the break. Taking them out, we had a 14.2% absenteeism rate on Monday, down to 12.7 yesterday, and 10.8 today. You can see the numbers of absences there, you know, 837 to 634 today out of our current enrollment of 5,874. Of course, there are 228 students just from these last few days diagnosed with COVID who are part of those absentee numbers. So obviously, it's a very significant chunk. We also know there are students out with other illnesses that are not COVID. And then, of course, there are, you know, typical absentees for, you know, just normally not feeling well as opposed to COVID. But COVID makes up a very significant amount of those absences. As far as staff absences, we're running about 10%. That's way higher than we typically would see for staff absences. We typically would be, you know, maybe 2% or 3%, maybe a little bit more during cold and flu season. But you can see that those are the numbers out of our, about 950 staff, running about 100 or so absent each day. About half of those are staff who actually have contracted COVID. There's some number of the remaining staff who might be out for a COVID-related reason, such as caring for a family member who has COVID. Again, we have some staff who are out with other illnesses that are non-COVID-related, then other just, other types of absences, whether that's someone who's on bereavement leave because there's been a death in their family, and other kinds of normal, day-to-day absenteeism. And our staff attendance, historically, in Shrewsbury has always been outstanding. And people, you know, they should not feel guilty if they happen to get COVID. And I think that's what we tend to see, is people feeling guilty, like, you know, I have to be out. And, you know, they shouldn't feel guilty about it. They're doing what they're supposed to do. Obviously, there's lots of people contracting it who prefer not to. But we're, this percentage, we've been able to manage. We have, we don't have as many substitutes as we'd like. We're recruiting more. There are more coming online who have been responding to our advertising. College students were here for a few weeks, so it's definitely being helpful. But there's a lot of moving around and shifting within the schools in terms of paraprofessionals covering for teachers. Paras shifting and covering for another paraprofessional role where they need to. Teachers covering classes for other teachers on their duty period at the high school, for example. So there's a variety of ways, and that's something that is having an impact. Because we know, for example, that if a paraprofessional, under normal circumstances, is giving that extra dose of reading support to a small group of students in an elementary classroom, and they're not able to do that because they're covering for an absent teacher, those students are going without that second dose of reading. So there's definitely some trickle-down cascading effect to what's happening here. But that's the circumstances we have to deal with. We have to triage this with the primary focus being on having students in school learning every day as best we possibly can, and trying to avoid closing schools for a whole variety of reasons I'll speak to in a moment. So to wrap up, talking about that importance of keeping schools open. And as we've talked about all throughout the pandemic, we have to balance the risks that exist. We know that there are risks associated with COVID-19, but we also know there's risks to students' mental and social and emotional health and their academic progress if they're not in school or if schools are closed or we go to remote learning. I want to, the questions have been asked before by the school committee. I do want to let people know I did confirm with Ms. Freeman. To our knowledge, we're typically, are made aware by a family and certainly by a staff member if someone is hospitalized for any reason. This school year, we have had zero hospitalizations that we're aware of due to COVID-19. However, this number may actually be higher. This was a quick poll I did of some principals earlier, of our principals earlier today. You know, at least 19 of our students have been hospitalized for mental health issues. And that's not unique to Shrewsbury. There's a mental health crisis among young people in our, in our nation. There was a crisis that had emerged prior to COVID, and COVID has made it much worse. Additionally to that, we've had about, that we know of right now, 17 students who were recommended for hospitalization, but they were not admitted either because the family decided to do something alternatively or because programming wasn't available, or is not available. They may be waiting for admission. We've had roughly 60 students referred for emergency mental health services over the course of this school year. We have a program called Interface through William James College that provides access to families who, as a referral process, for mental health support and counseling. And we've had 40 families over the course of the school year reach out through that, through that program. It's anonymous to us, but we certainly know that. We have the numbers from our partners at William James. Remote learning, as I've tried to communicate to the community, certainly is a massive disruption to the lives of many of our students and as well as our staff members' families. And there's no question, and this is what our goal is. Our primary function as a school district is to promote student well-being as well as learning. But our schools also function as a really key part of our society's infrastructure. And we certainly have learned that loud and clear during the pandemic. If schools are closed, even if there's learning that continues in a remote fashion at home, which has other issues associated with it, but if children aren't able to go to school each day, that has a massive impact on families, especially for younger children where childcare comes into play in order to supervise them to keep them safe. And it not only affects those families, but it affects other sectors of the economy. And today, actually, on a Zoom call with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they had a physician from Harvard Medical School who apparently is going to be publishing an article in the Washington Post, I believe, in the next day or two with some colleagues, talking about, right now, the healthcare system is having a lot of struggles with staffing. And if we shut down schools, it is going to exacerbate that and have a very negative effect on our healthcare system. You know, we're obviously concerned about the healthcare system becoming overwhelmed by the number of COVID cases. But if they can't get enough staffing, and if school closures contribute to that, it will exacerbate that problem. I thought that was an interesting point, and wanted to include it this evening. So, again, just ending with what our primary goal is, which is to provide full-time in-school learning with minimal disruptions while we try to mitigate and minimize the risk of contracting COVID-19. I deeply appreciate the work that everyone in the school district is doing and the support we're receiving from families. We've had a very small number of families, I don't have a number, but a, just anecdotally, a small number, who are choosing to keep their child home because they're very concerned about the number of cases, and, you know, certainly empathize with that. And we want to provide flexibility and grace, just as we have throughout this program. At the same time, I think some have been asking for additional work or teachers to do extra work to get their child something at home, which is something I'm going to be communicating very clearly is not something I expect our educators to do. Our educators are already stretched. Schools are open. Ultimately, those families, if they really don't feel that they're safe to have their child attend, they're going to need to make the decision to homeschool their child or put them in a virtual school or private school that may be closing down. I'm not aware of any. You know, schools are open, not just in Shrewsbury. I believe strongly it's the right thing to be doing. There is going to be spread, further spread of COVID. There's no question. The good news is, we're not seeing hospitalizations. We're not seeing bad outcomes. Fortunately, this strain seems to be more mild in terms of how it affects people. It doesn't mean it doesn't cause anxiety for folks. None of us want anybody to get sick. But managing through this and not having the, no negative impact of closing our schools and moving to remote learning, especially on our most vulnerable students, is critically important. And we're going to continue to work to do everything we can to keep our schools open and working well for our kids and our community. So with that, Ms. Freeman and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Thank you, Ms. Freeman, for the report. And as always, colleagues, questions or comments? Dr. McGee?
Just, this was an extremely informative and clear presentation. I really appreciate all the work that went into it, and there's a lot of information here. I want to track back a little bit to the contact, contact tracing piece. And if you find that a student is positive, their, their family is informed. They know, so their immediate household contacts are already informed and in the loop. And their, their contacts in school, the, the tracing that would occur in school, is that, that is continuing to occur as well?
So that's what I was referring to, is the in-school contact tracing, where this, since the fall, we've been spending large amounts of time on each case, going to each space in the building that the student is in.
Yeah.
Or the staff person, if it's a positive staff person, measuring who's at what distance from that student in, you know, six to eight places in a building.
Yeah.
You know, really getting exact as we can so that we're only identifying the people who, and notifying the people who need to be concerned that they were a close contact. And not doing, you know, widespread communications about you might have been exposed. Those kinds of precise, going to all those spaces and measuring just isn't possible with the, the volume of cases that we have right now. with the, the volume of cases that we have right now. So we will still look at cases. We will still, you know, try to determine if clusters are happening, but we won't be able to do, to do that detail.
And at this point in time, the number of people participating in pool testing is third?
It's only about twenty-five percent.
Quarter?
Yep.
Are, is there, do you think you could inspire more people to participate if they knew that there were positive cases in the school or something, that this might be one way to?
It may. It's interesting, we, so to be part of the test and stay program, parents need to sign consent for their child for the general testing program. So by signing up for test and stay, you've signed up for pool testing.
Yeah.
But we get emails from a lot of those parents saying, please stop sending the kid home. I don't want to pool test. I only want to test and stay when I know my child has been exposed. So those are people who are aware of the cases, and they're saying no thanks to pool testing.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the hesitation is. I think it's a great peace of mind for people who do participate in it. You know, every week you get that kind of check-in about your status, but I think there's some feeling that it's going to disrupt their life if their child tests positive. And as the person who often makes the phone calls to people to say that their child has tested positive, I have had people react very surprised that this now means that their child has to quarantine. So I think there are mixed feelings about what getting that result would mean.
And if, I, I'm forgetting all the guidelines, but if a student is fully vaccinated and they're exposed to someone, they're in contact with someone, what's the current advice on that?
So if you are fully vaccinated and you're a close contact and you have no symptoms, then you don't need to do anything.
Right.
Except monitor for symptoms.
Right.
If you have symptoms, then you should get tested.
So because we have such a high vaccination rate, we're, we're still in pretty good shape?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Further comments, Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, I, I also want to, of course, thank you for this, all of the information. It's so helpful for all of us to understand what's, what's going on. I guess I just, I'm imagining the somewhat level of desperation when parents are driving up saying, can you, can you test my kid because I can't get a test, right? And what that, what that means, but also knowing eligibility for that program funnels through your staff, right? And so as you, as you lose the ability to do what you have seen as sort of the right steps and notifying, you know, the, these three kids from the lunchroom and these four kids from the gymnasium, it seems as though that, that has a downward impact of having fewer people be able to participate in test and stay. So I just wonder what your thinking is about what that looks like? Because at the same time, we want more people getting tested.
Right.
By your staffing challenges, which are completely legitimate, and I understand the rationale. But now we have fewer kids who maybe could be involved in a program that is helping keep some kids from coming to the school.
So I think Dr. Sawyer and I just very briefly started talking about if we're pulling back on contact tracing, we're going to need to figure out what that means for how we will notify people who will be eligible for test and stay. But really, it's what's happened this week that has us really feeling like we need to scale back the contact tracing. So that is something that we're going to look at. In a perfect world, if I got to choose, I would love to have symptomatic people be able to use test and stay as a resource. But the, the state program, again, doesn't allow for that. And it's really a capacity issue and a resource issue on the state end. They don't, we don't have a supply of test kits for anyone who's having some symptoms to stop by and be tested there. So it will be interesting to see how that evolves, especially as more of our population becomes vaccinated, as those five to eleven-year-olds, as we see that percentage grow. Those people, as we just said, when you're fully vaccinated, you're not eligible for test and stay anymore because you wouldn't have to quarantine. So our test and stay numbers should be coming down. So I think there is room for some conversation about how we can better use that resource.
I think it'll be interesting to see what happens with, you know, the, the intent that I, as I understand it, at the national level, to ramp up the production of rapid tests.
Right.
We may see supply increasing substantially in the coming weeks and months. And if there are fewer people who need it for the current version of test and stay, whether there'll be some shift in policy in terms of what it allows.
Yep.
And whether or not, you know, we may want to look at anything ourselves in terms of any resources we might have to be able to, to augment that in some way. I, I don't think there's any doubt that, you know, we don't know, and obviously, nobody knows and has, no one has a crystal ball. But obviously, we're, we're seeing in, in the news a fair amount of predictions that this is going to spike very quickly as, as a nation and come down very quickly if it mimics what's happened other places in the world, in South Africa, for example. It'll be very interesting to see what happens with cases from that point forward. And, you know, if there, no other new variant comes along and spikes again, we may be coming into an endemic situation where we're managing this, much like we're managing the flu or RSV. I think that, you know, sometimes people forget that prior to COVID, there were really difficult, tricky respiratory diseases that can affect children as well as older adults and vulnerable people. And they're managed through yearly flu shots that were encouraged and certainly staying home when you have symptoms and going to see the doctor. And, you know, there certainly were hospital admissions for those kinds of things that had been going on our entire lives. But they were in the background because they were not to the extent, and, and now that, if, if it holds true, which we hope it does, that the negative outcomes from contracting this variant of COVID-19 are, are really de minimis. It, it is going to signal, obviously, the need for some changes for policy in terms of public health. And that remains to be seen, and we'll continue to evolve with that.
Further comments, Ms. Fritz?
I have the same question that Dr. McGee did on the pool testing. You know, at twenty-five percent, where it is a good mitigation tool, it's, it's just too bad that we're not seeing more, especially where you, rapid tests are, you just can't find them anywhere. I, I would hope with students and staff that we would see an increase because it is very helpful to kind of get through this. And the other thing, I just want to thank you, Ms. Freeman, and your staff and Dr. Sawyer and all of the central office staff, teachers, everyone that's been, I mean, this has really been a grind for two years, you know? And we will get to a point where we're going to say, remember when, like, you know? I know, exactly. I remember when we did it. And I just think for, you know, for the school committee, we see what happens behind the scenes as well. And the amount of work that over almost two years has been immense. We never thought we'd be doing this, and we didn't think we'd be doing it for this long. So just thank you for everything, and we are very lucky to be in this district with the type of leadership and foresight that we have to make sure that our kids are safe and our schools are open. So thank you to everybody for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Palance?
Comment, question, comment? Just a comment to start with, I want to thank the district, the superintendent on down for very clear, effective communication from the district over the last few days. This has been an extraordinarily anxious time in this country for the past, over the world the past few years. But I think in the past few weeks, we have seen anxiety in our school community spike substantially, not only because cases are rising so drastically, but also because there's an unusual speed at which we're seeing developments and changes occur. Folks are confused. Folks are taken aback. Folks are surprised by some of the guidance. The level of anxiety is very, very high right now, and I think whenever that happens, the need to communicate clearly and effectively, including sometimes over-communicating, is, is more helpful than not. So I just want to continue to encourage that approach of sharing as much information as absolutely possible with the community. I think that, that, that feeling of transparency is very helpful to our community right now. A question, you know, also on the contact tracing. And, and I understand that your conversations with DPH and, and possibly DESI are, are ongoing, trying to figure out how to approach this. And I'm curious if one of the things being discussed is, have there been any conversations this week about DPH or DESI trying to provide additional human resources in terms of helping you with contact tracing? I think for members of the community who might be alarmed to learn about the capacity, I think to understand that contact tracing isn't happening as much in the broader community is a little bit easier to swallow. Omicron is, is, is being transmitted so quickly. It's absolutely not practical in the broader community, but this might be a feeling, well, you know, the schools, it's a finite area with a finite number of kids in it. You know, I understand, knowing our staffing capacity and hearing you talk, you, you only have so many staff doing this. But it strikes me as something that is very much theoretically possible to do if you actually have the staffing resources. I'm curious, is that one of the things on the table? DPH or DESI trying to come up with additional resources to help districts do that?
So DPH, to my knowledge, is pretty maxed out with trying to deal with the number of cases in the community. And so I, I've not heard any offers from DPH to help staff. They are peeling back on contact tracing in general. And I have heard several people at, on the DPH weekly webinars speak to the fact that contact tracing was very important at the beginning of COVID for us to understand how it was spreading, but it's less so now. Now that we understand the virus better, contact tracing isn't as important to the public health response as it once was. And that is why they closed the Contact Tracing Collaborative and the, the local boards of health are not doing as much contact tracing for contacts outside of school. For example, when we have a case in school, we've been asked by public health to have a conversation with the family and ask them to kind of contact trace the students outside of school contacts. They do not receive a call from public health if they've spoken to us because public health doesn't have the capacity to do that. As far as DESI offering staff, I think Dr. Sawyer has been on the same calls I have been. They, they talk a little bit about staffing or to reach out, but nothing concrete has been.
Yeah, I think their general message would be, you know, districts have received various types of money through the feds, filtered through DESI, and they would expect you to use those dollars if that's something you're interested in. But that's what we did to hire two contact tracers. At the same time, you know, bringing those people up to speed was a lot of time and energy and that we were triaging left and right as, as we go. And it wasn't necessarily easy to find people who were willing to do that work, just kind of with substitute, with substitute teachers. There are not a whole lot of folks who are responding to calls for any kind of human resources support. You know, if there are ways for us to bring more on board, we'll certainly consider that. And I think it's not a question of us having some, you know, we, I think we do have some financial resources right now. It's really more about what's pragmatic and what's, what we're available to actually procure. But I think the, we'd have to give some consideration to how many people would actually need to get to the volume we're at. And, and again, I don't want to overrespond to what might be a two or three-week huge spike that may come down just as quickly. And I think we're, like anything else, we're going to have to be, I think, pragmatic and reasonable about what's possible when we're at this peak situation, hopefully, over these next couple of weeks.
And just one final comment and alluding to something that Dr. Sawyer had talked about earlier, which was, and I know there was a lot of coverage on this in the news media, the distribution of rapid test kits and masks by DESI over the weekend. I want to thank all of our staff, including the superintendent, Mr. Collins and his team, who are involved in the picking up and the distribution of those over the weekend. And I also want to thank all of the staff who took time out of their weekend to go and retrieve those tests. I really think it's important for us to know, you know, as a school committee, we're the employer of everyone who works for this district. And, and we had folks doing that over what was supposed to be their holiday vacation time. And I really want to highlight the fact that we had a lot of staff who not only took time to make sure those tests got distributed, but we had staff making sure, sometimes driving well out of their way so that they could go pick up those tests. And it may be tempting to look at that as something that was for the staff, for them. I see that as a tool that our staff got to use to ensure they were keeping their students and their colleagues safe. So I want to recognize that we had a lot of SPS employees who took time away from their holiday to, to, to help distribute and to access those materials. And I want to thank them for doing so and recognize that.
Sure.
I just, I wanted to highlight again, because we had a little conversation about the pool testing and everything, and I was concerned about it until I talked to you a little bit more. And I think we're in good shape. I, you know, I think in a, in an environment where eighty to ninety-five percent of the people are vaccinated, the contact tracing piece doesn't have a significant impact on the treatment of eighty to ninety-five percent of the people. And, and so I think we're, we're in a very good position from that point of view. And I feel much more reassured about how this is being handled that way. I think the other piece to know is, is that there are a couple of reasons to stop the contact tracing. One may be the understanding of the, the nature of the disease. The other is the nature of the implementation of contact tracing. And with the contracting to outside agencies that the state did for, according to their website, which I'm looking at right now, for the over five hundred thousand cases of COVID that they traced, they found two hundred, five hundred thousand cases, they found two hundred and fifty thousand contacts. They found one half of one contact, one contact for every two people, which, you know, you kind of know is not terribly accurate. They're missing most of the contacts that people had. So even when it was running, when they were doing the best they could, it wasn't really hitting it out of the park.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank Ms. Freeman, Dr. Sawyer, and the entire staff that puts together these reports for us every meeting. I mean, you're, you're corralling the data. You're getting these updates. There's a tremendous amount of work that goes into this, just from somebody who does this on a quarterly basis. For you to be doing it daily, weekly, you know, you name it, it's just, to me, it's a consistent valuable public service that you're providing, really gives everybody a sense of what's happening in Shrewsbury. So thank you for all of that. Also, thank you to our school nurses as well with all the work that's going on behind the scenes. As, as Fritz said, you know, we, we provide a sample in this meeting of what's happening. There's, there's a lot happening behind the scenes with contact tracing. Communication has been exceptional. I know I've, I've received calls with regards to, you know, close contacts. I just think the protocols are exceptional, and I have peace of mind, you know, sending my daughter to school every day, knowing that she is, is, is going to be safe through a really challenging time. I also echo the sentiments of, of Mr. Palance and what Dr. Sawyer mentioned with regards to the distribution of test kits. Learning that on Wednesday, among the many curveballs that this district has been thrown, that was another one that was just another Herculean effort to be able to distribute those tests in a timely manner. And, and just a big thanks to those that were involved in the distribution of that on the weekends and to the staff that came and picked up those tests, just really outstanding work. You know, I certainly understand the public concerns, the risks associated with COVID. I think we're all aware of it. During the holiday break, I think in the news, you hear a lot of discussion around, you know, this surge and whether or not schools should close on Monday. Or in some districts, maybe they, they decided to go remote in other parts of the country. But, you know, when I look at things in Shrewsbury from my perspective, you know, when you consider the depth of the mitigation protocols that we have in place, you name it, mask mandates, staff vax mandates, you know, the, you know, the cleaning protocols, you know, I think, you know, from my perspective as a parent, when you look at among the safest places to be for your children, I would say schools have to be looked at as, as one of the primary places in terms of safety. So thank you to everybody involved. And with that, Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
Final comment is that I think it's just important people to know, kids are really happy to be back.
Yeah.
And in school. I was able to visit a few schools earlier this week, and there's a lot of smiles behind the masks. And there's great teaching and learning going on. We have the most, as far as I'm sure, we have the best education professionals and support staff anywhere. They are on their game, making sure kids have productive experiences in school every day. And, you know, when, when you're there and you see what's happening, it just reinforces for me why it's so important that that's where we are. Kids should be in school. The only thing that's going to get in the way is if we're at a situation where we just can't staff safely. And we hope to avoid that situation. And we'll, you know, work to, to ride through this latest wave and, you know, continue to keep things as steady as we can. But we really appreciate the support of the school committee with this. And I underscore everything you're saying about Ms. Freeman, our school nurses. They're, they're just doing unbelievable work, and we need to continue to find ways to support them with that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
The next item on our agenda is Under Curriculum. It's a report for Shrewsbury High School Program of Studies, Proposed Changes. Just a little background for colleagues and the public. Each year, the high school leadership team makes recommendations for adjustments to the course offerings based on a variety of factors. And tonight, we will highlight the proposed changes for the 2022, 2023 school year, which are articulated in our enclosed memo. And after hearing questions and feedback from the committee and propose, the proposed changes, which will include, are included in the materials, we'll review in our next meeting. And the committee will be asked to vote during our January nineteenth meeting. With us tonight is the principal of Shrewsbury High School, Mr. Todd Buzidlow, and our director of music and performing arts, Mr. Thomas O'Toole. Welcome.
Good evening, and thanks for having us. And I'm glad I could get on the airplane, three times for the password, but I got it. So thanks for having us tonight. This year, we have very limited changes, but I think it's important, Mr. O'Toole is here tonight to kind of walk us through the changes in performing arts. So I want to thank him for coming tonight. And I'll walk you, the committee, and our viewing audience through kind of the procedures we have relative to the Program of Studies of High School. So I think part of this is giving a really good overview of how we start off the course selection process and the construction of the master schedule at the high school. And for those that have been on the committee or have seen this presentation before, we kind of map out our timeline from essentially February to August. of map out our timeline from essentially February to August, and I'll walk through every step. And initially, what we'll see, your students in the district will see counselor presentations around this program that you'll vote on in two weeks, and the changes that are presented here tonight. Teachers make recommendations within Power School. So when students go in and register, they'll actually see what they're recommended for, align properly with that. We moved to an online registration system. Couple with that, we also have some informational nights. We have an advanced placement informational night for juniors and senior families on February eighth of this year. Then we have our eighth grade curriculum night, which is on February fifteenth. So if you're an Oak Middle School family watching in the audience, you certainly want to mark your calendar. We're having a, planning on having in-person curriculum night at the high school. It's good for parents to come up and actually get a feel of the building and listen to our directors around the programming offerings within each department. Then we move through the February twenty-eighth to March fourteenth, where our individual school counselors actually meet with students around their course selection, and to ensure that things will be inputted into Power School properly, and have conversations around balancing schedule, course load, amount of hours between co-curriculars, outside activities such as work. And this is where the important part here on three twenty-one, we'll actually get all the course recommendations, course selections from students. We tally it all up, and we distribute it to our directors, and we start looking at sections and allocating FTE for the following year. We start to consider, the following week, we start to consider teaching sections. And part of the teaching section is how do we determine if we will run a course? And a lot of that determination, a lot of that is predicated by the amount of students who sign up for a course. So what we've tried to do in the past is really narrow down the offerings within the program of study, and be relatively assured of what we're going to be, students will be able to sign up for, will be able to get that, their courses that they signed up for. So we've really kind of pared down the program to allow it to meet our FTE needs. Typically, a section in terms of viability for courses, we really run probably our smallest sections at about ten students. We have very few sections at ten, but we're trying to develop a program, say it's computer science or cybersecurity in the past. We want to get some of those programs off the ground, so we'll run those sections smaller. But typically, ten to twelve is the fewest amount of students we'd get for a course section. Anyone that doesn't agree with teacher recommendations or their course placement, all those meetings have to happen with directors and parents and students around the table to talk about all the concerns and questions they may have. That have, those all have to be completed by April first. And then we begin some serious data entry on four eleven, going into April vacation. And then April vacation is the build, where we actually start to construct and set up restrictions or program Power School to run various iterations of the selections to get maximum percentage of courses per student. Then we actually load the students into Power School, run the schedule, the algorithm again, and we try and figure out what we're going to get for the best and most efficient schedule. This is a nice date, on June first. It's always nice to get the, the master schedule completed. And then it really comes down to resolving conflicts with students and families where we might have double books, or have to choose an elective, or we have a singleton section of a course, say, in theater arts that conflicts with an AP course, which are, you know, once those singleton courses are set, it's hard to kind of work around those things. So that's kind of the, the course selection timeline from a really, I don't want to call it ten thousand-foot view, but from February to August. And it's already all laid out, and we have things in place, and we're really ready to go. So quite simply, Family Consumer Sciences is just an alternating courses. Next year, we'll run Foods of the World. We alternate, this year we're running Mediterranean Cuisine. So they alternate every other year. Bake, baking and pastry arts will not be offered, and culinary, baking, baking and pastry arts will be offered, rather, while culinary methods for nutritious foods will not be offered next year. Again, alternating courses by year and electives, two popular electives. We took the feedback not only from members of this committee, but also students in terms of generating interest around access to business programming and investigating a business, business pathway. We have a number of students who attend business school, whether it's one of the three Bs here in New England, or Eisenberg at UMass. So we've added a new course per semester, which would run one of the two semesters, basically Introduction to Business, and another course, Marketing. In the Intro to Business course, we take a look at finance, marketing, accounting, ethics, entrepreneurship, and e-commerce. In the Marketing course, look at market research, promotional strategies, brand management, merchandising, and influencer marketing, which is probably pretty big nowadays. And I think, based on social media, students are probably influenced a lot by that. So those are some of the topics that we'd cover in those courses. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Toole to talk about his proposed changes and some of the language changes within the Performing Arts Department. Tom?
Okay. Well, we have several changes this year. One of the changes that you can see is AP Music Theory and Techniques of Music Theory. We're planning not to offer those next year, and instead offer a course in songwriting, a new course. And that would be targeted, you know, to a different group of students, maybe the students who are more interested in coming to our coffeehouse nights and performing. And it would also give them the, the opportunity to work with lyrics as well as with music as well. So the music theory portion of that would be a little bit lighter, but it would incorporate the lyrics. Voice and Acting and Theater Arts Two, we actually only have one staff member who has the skill sets to offer the, the courses in theater and drama. So he's going to offer Theater Arts One, which is a course that routinely fills up, and Theatrical Design, which is a technical theater course. And the intention is that we would continue to offer Theater Arts One each year, and then alternate the years with the other three courses. We do have some name changes to some of our courses. So we want to change Orchestra to Concert Orchestra. Since we have incorporated the Chamber Orchestra as the Honors Ensemble, just labeling the two groups to differentiate them, particularly for concert programs, has, has just been a little bit difficult. But also, just to be more consistent within the department, to call it Concert Orchestra would make it more equivalent to Concert Band. Concert Orchestra should be a prerequisite for Chamber Orchestra, so we're giving basically our middle school teachers' recommendations for the Honors Ensembles a little bit more weight this year. We have found that sometimes when we audition freshmen for an Honors Ensemble, that they've really worked hard for that audition, and sometimes it's not a level of, of musical technicality that they can keep up over the long term. So we would like to just change that prerequisite. Same thing with Wind Ensemble and Jazz Ensemble, that Concert Band would be the prerequisite for the two. Acapella Choir to Chamber Choir would just give the director a little bit more leeway in the literature he chooses. And also, acapella means without instrumental accompaniment. It's a challenging way to perform, but the other choirs have always been performing, or recently been performing, acapella pieces at the concert. Typically, there are three selections that they will do, and one of them will be acapella. Jazz Band to Jazz Band Rhythm Section. It was always in the intention that that course would be for students whose instrument does not fit into Wind Ensemble, because Wind Ensemble and Jazz Band are scheduled in the same period. Wind Ensemble meets four days, Jazz Ensemble meets two. Frequently, students are in both ensembles. But if you play guitar, bass, piano, drums, vibraphone, there's not a place for you necessarily in Wind Ensemble. So even this week, I had a guitarist come to me with the confusion that if I want to be in Jazz Ensemble, I have to learn another instrument so that I can take Wind Ensemble. So we just tried to straighten that language out a little bit to make it clear that if you are one of those students who plays one of those instruments that's not included in Wind Ensemble, it is okay to audition for Jazz Band Rhythm Section.
Thanks, Mr. O'Toole. This is really this, the Science and Engineering, adding this new course, Human Body Systems. This was actually approved two years ago by the committee through a project Lead the Way, this Project Lead the Way programming, it was approved by the committee. We took a hiatus on it. We had, we received a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Office of Executive Education. We weren't able to implement it as a result of COVID. So we reached out to the executive office and asked if we could put a hiatus on the grant until we kind of got in a better spot. We feel we're in a better spot. We want to just reinstitute it, institute it into the program and add it on the course selection sheet. There's a training component involved. We have the money that's available for that through the state. So meeting with Mr. Roscoe, we thought it was a good time to reintegrate it. It's been approved, but I think you just need to know that it's one of these programs that's, was championed by Lieutenant Governor. We, Dr. Sawyer and I met with the Lieutenant Governor two, three years ago around this programming. We did some visiting of other schools. So we're moving in the right direction around biomedical track through Project Lead the Way programming. Additionally, in Social Sciences, we have another core, we'd like to add a new course, Advanced Placement and Comparative Government and Politics. Basically, you've studied the policies, economics, and social challenges within six countries. Those six countries are China, Russia, Mexico, Iran, Nigeria, and the UK. And basically, how these government and political structures solve the same kind of problems, whether it's climate change or global issues. And looking at it through different lenses of how their policies and procedures impact the way they govern and make decisions. The additional, what we'd like to do is change the course out from global studies to local and global studies, and really looking at, taking a good look at the experiences of indigenous people here locally, and the impact it's had upon our community. And that was part of our conversation with the mascot committee last year. And it's also going to incorporate the Beal Wall, the Beal History Wall, and there'll be a local history component, so we can continue that along the way. But it also takes a lot, takes a look at some of the human geography elements, such as urbanization, climate change, and also poverty and how it impacts societies. So the final proposed changes or additions are under the World Languages Program. This is, these are additions that are on recently, or last year, they were approved for three new courses, which have been very, very successful. We'd like to offer another section of, or the next iteration of Linguistics for Foundations of Linguistics Two. So students who have participated in Linguistics One this year could continue their study of linguistics. This is actually accepted for college, state college and university as a foreign language or world language requirement, so this is a good thing. We also want to offer Heritage Spanish Two and Heritage Portuguese Two. And these two courses, quite frankly, are for native speakers of both those languages. We do have native language learners within those languages that might be, believe it or not, I want to say, I don't want to say illiterate, but have difficulty either reading or writing in their native language, but they can speak the native language. So this focuses on, on those learners, and I think what we find is that we've had incredible success in terms of identifying people and getting those students engaged. It's a really robust, significant program that has, actually, in my opinion, has improved their self-confidence, self-esteem, and feel like they're more of a part of our community. So those are two courses that we want to continue to expand at the high school in World Languages. And I want to thank Mr. Almeida for, for his vision around these three courses in particular. And that's really it for us. So we'll take any questions you may have relative to the, the changes or language changes, and we'd be happy to answer anything you may have.
Great. Thanks for the presentation. Colleagues, questions or comments? Ms. Heffernan, sure.
I just want to thank you, particularly that opening slide. The proposals all make perfect sense to me, and I think, I thank you for your thoughtfulness. The, the complexity with which it takes to, to build the schedule is impressive. As somebody with an eighth grader, I've noted the date of when and where we need to be. But it is, it is an impressive amount of work, and I know also behind the build is fitting all of those boxes into the rooms in the building, right? And knowing that the constraints that you're operating under, under there and really at max capacity. So mostly, this is just a, a thank you, and I certainly would welcome any feedback that we might get from the community at large, but all of those changes make a ton of sense from where I sit.
Great, thank you.
Great. Certainly appreciate the presentation. As Ms. Heffernan said, and I certainly know a lot of the work that goes into, you know, certainly building these schedules, and I think equally impressive always is the percentage of the top choices that students get as part of their, their schedule for the year. So thank you for all the work that goes into that, and, and also for the thoughtful approach that you put into these changes. Really appreciate the, the information provided.
Great, you're welcome. Thank you.
Dr. Sawyer, anything further?
A couple of things. First off, thank you to Mr. Bizidlow for the outline, especially of the, of the process and the various recommendations for choosing. I really appreciate Mr. O'Toole being here this evening to represent the Performing Arts Department. Under his leadership, they continue to excel, and I think that what you heard was just another reason why the thoughtfulness they bring to thinking about what's going to really work best for our students who are exploring, whether it's vocal or instrumental music. There are some other classes you'll see when you get the full program of studies that have been going on, history of rock and roll, guitar lessons, or learning how to play the guitar as part of a course. There's, it's certainly plenty of opportunities for very serious musicians, and also some opportunities for people who are just interested in the topic generally. And then in addition to that, of course, you know, the emphasis on performance, the concerts, the plays, the Spring Musical, you know, we just have an extraordinarily successful program, and he and the faculty should be commended for that. Ms. Clouder sends her regrets she couldn't be here this evening. She worked with Mr. Bizidlow in her role overseeing curriculum, as he met with each of the directors at the high school level and listening to their pitches, so to speak, around what they might want to see in their programs. It, it is a reality that we don't have enough space, and we don't have unlimited resources. We're certainly better positioned than we were in the past, but, you know, to add things, you know, you need to add the ability to hold those classes, and we're pretty maxed out for space right now at the high school. So over time, that is something strategically, when you look at the longer term, we'll have to continue to look at, is how we can overcome that space issue. I'll be curious to, to see what the space study that we'll be doing over the course of this year, the Loro Pagano Associates is embarking upon that with the town, and what we can do for our high school for the long term. I am happy to see some expansion and movement towards doing some exploratory courses in business and, and marketing. I think that's something that, we know that there's some demand for, that can, students can sort of try out, get a sense of it's something they might be interested in studying. You know, really, the more we can provide electives where students might be able to get a sense of something they might want to do in post-secondary education, I think is helpful. I apologize that I mentioned this in a previous meeting, but I ran into actually some parents over the course of the summer of a graduate of Shrewsbury High School, who was one of the first to be able to take the cybersecurity course, but who has decided to major in that, had a great internship already, and I think was pretty much lining up a job in the field, who's been, I think, coming back to actually present to the students who are in the course now. That's the sort of thing that is very gratifying, when you see us move towards introducing something we haven't had before, and it really does change the trajectory of how a student moves forward with their academic programming and, and plans beyond Shrewsbury High School. And I think some of these examples will be able to do that. So again, thank you very much. We appreciate it. The full program of studies draft will be in your next packet for your next meeting. We'll ask you to vote to approve that at your next meeting, and then they'll move forward with that process, and, you know, there'll be lots of good things happening for, for students as a result.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. The minutes from the school committee meeting held on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one were provided. Any revisions or edits to reports, there being none, they will be accepted as written. We don't need to go into executive session tonight, because we did meet prior to the start of the general session. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn general session for the evening. So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote is required. Mr. Pallach?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you, and good night.